This evening we have a special tribute to our Board of Education. With us are the magical singers, and they have a special, special treat.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're going to sing a Latin song that's written in a polyphonic way, which means each melody kind of comes in and goes out. They're very, very carefully woven together, and it's a beautiful song. It is titled "Sequecherus." The translation is "Like as the heart desire of the water brook, so long with my soul after thee, O God," written by Giovanni Palestrina. Thank you so much. On the lighter side, we're going to sing one song just to sing goodnight to you. I'm sure you may have heard this melody before. We're going to feature our men from Lakewood.
Well, your mother's love and your father's hate to see you stay away. I hate to leave you, baby. Whoa. You know I hate to go.
As we continue, Madam President, with our tribute to the board this evening, to our community members who are watching us on television. We had a lovely reception Friday, so we were able to come and have the staff tell the board personally, and we had cake and a few tidbits. But also, if you will look on the webpage for Southfield Public Schools, you will see just a little signal there recognizing our board. And I hope you have noticed also the banners that we have around JWE. This is an outstanding board. Now, I'm a little biased, because I work with them every day, but I want to tell you, all of the great things that are going on here in Southfield have been supported by this board. You see them here at the board meetings, and it looks so easy. But they come on Tuesday nights for three and four-hour sessions to study all of the decisions that are behind what you see today. So again, we want to thank you. We have given them a small token of our esteem to take with them, little goody bags that they can take with them this evening. But most importantly, we say thank you for your service to this district, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Robinson, we thank you for that wonderful treat you arranged for us that we just had, and thank you very much for everything that you do.
Well, I had a lot of help.
Well, this evening we are going to recognize some students. We have students, the Michigan District Competition Awards. Dr. Hita Cook from Southfield Lakewood High School is here with more information. Are you here? So, um, oh, I'm sorry. Are our students here?
Yes.
Could you say anything? Would one of you like to explain to us what the competition is?
I'm going to have the students explain a little bit better about what it is that they took, what the awards they took place. Quite a few in the class division at Allen Park Michigan, so we have them ranked a little bit for you.
We went to district competition right before we let out the winter break, and for competition, we did different business competitions and worked in business settings to try to solve problems that can easily come up in business settings. And that was pretty much what we had to do for district competition. We had to take a test also. We all passed that, and we are now on our way to state competition in March. We won our division for business, law, and ethics. We won the test-taking competition, and we also won our interview competition for district competition.
A little bit hesitant, but they did an outstanding job. They also took top performance of the entire competition is the best way to say that. And again, all the students who performed did well, and all the students who went to the competition won the award, and that's outstanding, and we have the top DECA program in overcount.
What are your names, please? Gentlemen?
I am Isaiah Land. I am a senior at Southfield Lakewood.
I am Russell Hudson. I'm a senior at Southfield Lakewood.
My name is Ariel Eccleson. I'm also a senior.
Are your parents here? Would you stand, please, if you're here? Yes? That's wonderful. You march. Well, you're already with your. Buzzy Center has received recognition this year. Ms. Hill, are you there? The principal from Buzzy, Ms. Hill. Buzzy Center for Early Childhood Development.
Good evening, Dr. Cook cabinet, board members, and the audience. Buzzy received accreditation from the National Association for the Education of the Young Child. Our accreditation is good through 2019, and I'm really going to ask the two ladies behind me, who are two of my teacher leaders in the building, who worked very, very hard because achieving accreditation through NACI, there is a lot of evidence that has to be gathered. And they worked very hard, and I would, of course, like to recognize them and let them have say a few words, and that's just an ask of Miss Brundage.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. We were on the NACI Committee for Buzzy Early Childhood Center. We were assigned the task to gather all the evidence. So when the NACI team arrived at our building to review our books and look at our evidence to see if we were on task and on point, we had at least ten, maybe twelve catalogs of classroom books that were triple sized than normal, loosely sized, and some could barely close in that. And we spent time that was definitely not our normal eight to four o'clock. Some of us arrived at six AM, stayed till eight PM, stayed over the weekend, not at the building, but we are home and back in the room. But we made sure that everything was on point and made our school look above and beyond what they expected from us.
There's not much more, though. I can say that Mr. Nettis said we worked very, very hard, and it was worth every minute that we spent working, because it was for our children, and our children are very important to us. And like, you often come down to the Buzzy Center, you can see what we're doing, and we want you to spread the word for all the other children that are preschoolers, three and four-year-olds. If you would just send them our way and just let them see what we have to offer, we would appreciate it. And faith was learned on that. Thank you.
Well, the next thing is Ms. Rhea Hollis. Are you there? Ms. Rhea Hollis, Southfield Lakewood Alumni, Oakland University Keeper of the Dream Scholarship Award, won, and I was expecting Ms. Hollis to give us more information. Do we have someone who can tell us?
You know, we can invite her back. Oh, I think we should. She's an alumni, and we want to highlight our alumni, and she's one of the scholarships. We'd like to, we can.
We'll invite her back. Okay. Keep your eyes open, please, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we have the report of our student board representative, Ms. Kennedy Armstrong, Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Cook Robinson, Central Office Staff and Administrator, Southfield Public School Staff, Parents, Students, and students. My name is Kennedy Armstrong, and I am your student representative from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. On December eleventh, five adults and seventeen students from Ismailandi Acre Program visited Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Our student leaders conducted a panel discussion in an attempt for our guests to see what makes Southfield Regional Academic Campus unique and special. On December twelfth, juniors went to the Star Theater to see the movie Twelve Years In Play. On Friday, the thirteenth of December, Mr. Bolger received the message that for the first time in five years, students from Southfield Regional Academic Campus were admitted to dual enrollment. It seemed to mean that good things can happen on Friday, the thirteenth. On December sixteenth, Mr. Solomon sent the Southfield Regional Academic STEM Club to a field trip to Dentsel Research Facility. Annually, Project Manhood sponsors a Kwanzaa celebration at Southfield Regional Academic Campus. On December nineteenth, the keynote speaker for the Tools Year Celebration was Mark Spitz. Students in Mrs. McNeese's Vannick Art Class created a video for the National Alternative Education Organization titled "Fight the Zombies: School Team Ahead." I anticipate that I will be reporting good news about the results from this competition. On January ninth, the Michigan Council of Women in Technology Foundation announced that Mr. Solomon's STEM team has selected, has been selected as a 2014 RoboFest Grant Winner for the amount of $500. We look forward to seeing our STEM team in action at district competitions that go into Texas. Happy New Year, have a good evening, and thank you for your time, and thank you for the evening, friends. Happy Appreciation.
And now, we have Mr. Davis Cole of Southfield High School.
Hello to the Board of Education, Superintendent, Administrators, and Community Members. Here is the Southfield High Blue Jay Report. SHS is gearing up for the end of the semester with ninth through eleventh grade students taking the DAT test last week, and all students taking final exams this week. Math testing will start for ninth through eleventh grade students next week. NHS applications have been completed, and Southfield is set to have the final NHS induction ceremony on February eleventh. Before we left for winter break, Southfield High hosted Reality Check on December twentieth. Reality Check is a program where SHS alumni come back and speak to students about life after graduation, career path, college, and a plethora of other experiences that current students should get familiar with. The Lady J basketball team currently has a record of three and four, and will host our rivalry, Southfield Lakewood, tonight, January fourteenth, and birthday Thursday, January sixteen. The Blue Jay basketball team has fought through one of the toughest schedules in the state but look to get back on the winning track tonight at North Farmington, where they will play a tough OAA Red Division matchup. The wrestling team hosted day one of the Oakland County Wrestling Tournament on December twentieth. This is the largest individual high school wrestling tournament in the United States with forty-five schools competing and over five hundred wrestlers entered. The Blue Jay matmen finished fifth overall with three wrestlers placing at the tournament: Keith Lee, Davion Williams, and Ezekiel Baker. I would like to thank you again for giving me this wonderful opportunity to represent my school at the Board of Education. Let's go to Southfield High School with Blue Jays, so.
Mr. Gregory Cunningham of University High School Academy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to thank the UHSA/UPREP PTA for the following contributions to teaching and learning during the first semester. Our PTA funded ACT plan testing for all eighth and ninth grade students. Our instructors use this information to make informed instructional decisions during the school year. Five iPads were purchased for our iPad cart, and the old Safe Feed school sign was purchased for our school. Currently, it is in storage and will be restored for UHSA/UPREP. Lastly, congratulations to the seventeen NHS inductees for exceeding expectations in the area of scholarship, leadership, service, and character, which are the four pillars of NHS. Thank you for your time.
We have now Ms. Savannah Green from Southfield Lakewood.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and Kwanzaa. The Southfield High's next team will put awards at Allen Park in December. The awards include a top exam score, top presentation, top eventer, and overall top eventer. You saw this one earlier. The junior class president, Robert Holmes, was one of the six Southfield High School students who have written the beginning of various Dr. Martin Luther King Junior chapters from generation to generation, building bridges of unity and understanding awards. Along with Robert were Maya Mandrich, William Davy, Amari Johnson, Darryl Lawrence, and Aaron Bradley. They are receiving their awards at this time. They could not be here. Three hundred and seventy-two students made the honor roll. This is thirty-five percent of the student body. A special recognition ceremony will take place in February. Thirty students participated in the captain ACT prep sponsored by the district last week. The Lady Chargers defeated Stony Creek last Friday. The record is now five to two, three-oh, in the OAA. They play Southfield High School today at Southfield High. The men's basketball team is two-fourth. They play Rochester High School tonight. Senior Lindsay Hope will be auditioning for the MSV State Honors Choir in Grand Rapids this Thursday. We collected four thousand five hundred cans of food for Glenna's Food Bank in Oakland. The Charger Launching Department had a grand reopening the week before Christmas, and the Southfield High School Charger Chapter of Project Manhood collected one thousand four hundred pounds of clothing for the Southfield Oakland Home Shelter. Thank you.
I want to apologize to you. I was a little nonplussed by seeing the choir lined up here, and I did not open this meeting properly. So I think we should have our introduction of officers now. I am the President of Southfield Board of Education, Fundy Cat.
You're on the Smiths, Vice President.
Penny Robinson.
Michael Fool, Treasurer. Darryl Buchanan, Trustee. Rand Williams, Trustee.
Wanda Cook Robinson, Superintendent.
Debbie Chance, Deputy Superintendent for Administrative Services.
David Turner, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Lynda Wood, Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
And we have Ms. Paula Robinson. Thank you, and this question, taking minutes, too, and that's it. Mr. Buchanan.
I would speak to the flag of the United States of America and to the objective for which stands: One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have the two Presidents' Reports. The President is on the floor.
Thank you. And I have a news flash for us this evening. As you know, the North American Auto Show is beginning here at the sea, and today, the Southfield High School Techno Jays were invited to participate in the Governor's Trust Conference at the North American Auto Show. They were supported by Dentsel Corporation, who are partners of ours, but more importantly, Southfield High was one of three schools in the state that was invited to come and to put their car on display. Yeah, that is very interesting. The car was solar powered, and in addition to that, Southfield High Senior Lamar Johnson presented a speech on his experience in STEM and his involvement in the Engineering Academy, and other student participants included, and these are all seniors, Ezekiel Baker, Carl Jones, Jeremy Cagler, and Jalen Smith. And I have invited them to come to the next board meeting and bring the solar powered car and share some update news with us after the conference. You know, I have the next presentation. It just warms my heart. I'm going to ask Ms. Beverly Scarborough to start making her way to the podium. I have had the opportunity to be in her classroom several times. The first time I went to her classroom, I went because they developed a nonprofit organization to help feed homeless families. The next time I was invited, she called me and said, "Come and go on this field trip with me." And I think I shocked her. I don't think she thought I was coming, but I went. And on that field trip, we went to the American House, where I found out that Miss Scarborough had been partnering with the seniors there for many, many years. And when I walked in and the children walked in, the seniors just lit up, because here come their pals. Their pals who had showed them how to get on the iPads and how to sing at Christmas and do all those wonderful things. But they've been back without me.
Several times.
Oh, several times. Sorry. But I invited her this evening because I wanted her to share with the community how we partner with all of our citizens of all ages.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wrote just something so I won't ramble. Large print. My name is Beverly Scarborough, and I'm a teacher at Stevenson Elementary School, and my wonderful principal is Ms. Lipperty. My students and I have been visiting the American House for the last three years, and as it was stated, American House is a senior living facility located about a half mile south of our school, so walking there gives us just the right amount of exercise. We visit the seniors and become their entertainment for the afternoon. I believe in educating the whole child, so often I weave into the curriculum opportunities for students to discover more about themselves and realize how they are so much more valuable than they ever knew. These experiences at American House are life-changing for both the students and the seniors. This evening, we will present to you the voices of the students by the students and the voices of the seniors by Jenna Shelby, the Director of Activities at American House, who's with us this evening. Our presentation will conclude with a brief PowerPoint. We will now begin our presentation with Diamond and Nicholas.
Hello, my name is... Hello, my name is Donna Alexander. Our future with American House is exciting. We are going to become pen pals. Through writing, we will get to know a senior just a little bit better. We may be surprised to find out how much we have in common. For this, we will be practicing our letter writing skills. I can't wait to get that started.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nicholas Smith. And this week, we are going to compete against the seniors in an academic contest called, Are You Smarter Than Fourth Graders? This will include fourth graders from two other classes. We will have thirty students, ten from each class, versus thirty seniors. You, I don't know who will win, but I hope we do.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia Cardoso. We had, we had an assignment to write about our experience at American House. Three of my classmates were choosing, chosen to read theirs to you tonight. I would like to introduce to you to Mia Durian, Nigel Burns, and Alicia Smith.
My name is Mia Durian. I had some fun, I had some wonderful experience with, at Amer- at American House with my class. I visited three times. We went there to sing Mickey Mouse. Uh, we also went there to visit teachers and seniors for Christmas cards. My favorite visit was Christmas, was the Christmas one. We had lots of fun visiting at American House. Our class visited the American House three times so far. The first time we visited, we sang to Mickey Mouse for his eighty-fifth birthday. We, the second time we visited, we went door to door trick or treating. The third time we visited, we sang Christmas cards and passed out cards on candy canes. The Christmas visit was my scene. We got to sing solo and I got to sing my solo. We got to meet the boss names, see. Plus, we loved when we got cookies. I really enjoyed my visits at the American House. At the American House, the seniors enjoy us coming. I learned that seniors can be funny. I'm looking forward to going back at the American House, thanks.
Hi, my name is Alicia Smith. I am going to talk about how I feel about American House and why it's a good idea. I feel great about American House. Ms. Jenna and the seniors are very nice. I feel like the seniors are giving us a chance to express our niceness and kindness. By being there makes me feel like I'm making a difference. Because some of the seniors have not been visited by their relatives in sixteen years, but we change that for them. And being there makes me feel like I'm special, like I'm somebody, like I'm a nice person. And that really makes, makes me feel good, believe me. It is a great idea to go to the American House because you're making everyone happy. You're making us happy, you're making the seniors happy, you're making Ms. Jenna happy.
And cry.
And that's a lot of people for me. I am so grateful and blessed for being in Miss Scarborough's class. Thank you for listening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nigel Burns and, um, I'm, I'm a fourth grader and I'm in Miss Scarborough class at Stevenson Elementary School. My American House experience, I enjoy going to the American House to help the senior citizens. I like singing and speaking with the elders. After our performance, the seniors clap and clap for my class. I love to speak with the elders and give them a big hug. The senior citizens have paved the way for us to be here today. Therefore, I'm happy and honored to be able to go to the American House. I am blessed that I have a teacher that cares about our students and the elders. I'm blessed that I was chosen to be in Miss Scarborough's class. I thank you for all listening to my American House experience. Have a good afternoon.
Hello, I'm, my name is Marion Harris. A very special friend at American House is Auntie Jenna. She always welcomes us with a smile and makes sure we have a treat when we leave. Carrot sticks. Just before the holiday break, she stopped by our classroom and brought us a treat. She even had cookies for the entire students, entire students and staff and candy canes for the whole school. As you can see, we have a great relationship.
I'm gonna do Jenna Shelby, Life Enrichment Director. I'm the Director of the Life Enrichment.
Put me behind them, of course. It's hard for me to follow. And of course, I did the same thing and I wrote everything down. I'm sorry for the water work, but everyone behind me knows that it comes and revisits. Okay, so hello, everyone. For those that don't know me already, my name is Jenna Shelby and I'm the Life Enrichment Director, um, down the road at American House, uh, senior living in Southfield. I've been a part of the American House team for almost six years, kind of followed my mother's footsteps. Um, I have been employed since November two thousand twelve, um, at that, at this location. Throughout the past year, I have been honored to build such a great partnership, but most importantly, a great friendship that has become to be such a very positive impact on our community at American House. Working with these students has really made my job very awarding. Um, I treat them as if they're my own children, although I don't get to punish them like my own. Residents in our community enjoy and look forward to their visits with the fourth graders. Um, Sally Girth is a current resident in our community and wrote a little something that I would like to share with all of you. I'm reading it just how she wrote. Hello there. Oh, dear students, hello there. I would like to express how thankful we are here at American House for your friendship. We are pleased that you have wanted to visit with us and get to know each other. My husband, Richard, turned eighty-five this year, lucky enough to be a part of Mickey Mouse's eighty-fifth birthday celebration. Although he is quite popular and lovely, seeing all of you was the best part. The excitement, the excitement on all of your little faces brought smiles to ours here at American House. That is a day we will, we will never forget. It is such a pleasure for all of us to visit with younger, the younger generation. It brings back such wonderful memories of my children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren growing up. It keeps, it also keeps our minds young. We hope that you find our visits with each other as special as we do. We look forward to being a mentor and a positive role model in your life. Take care and God bless. See you soon. I'll have Jenna have cookies ready. Here's Sally Girth. For those that don't know, January is National Mentoring Month and we have teamed up with Mrs. Scarborough, right? Fourth grade class to start, uh, start a mentoring program. As a senior, they have knowledge and skills that are extremely valuable to a young, to the younger generation. By sharing what they have learned and they could, they could, yeah, by sharing what they learned, they can help their mentees solve and goals, accomplish goals, solve problems is what I meant. They may even learn something themselves. The ultimate purpose of mentoring is to provide the younger generation with a trusted adult who can teach them about life lessons, experiences, and hopes to make a positive impact in their life and become a role model. Research shows that youths who are mentored have higher self-esteem and do better in school. I believe that mentoring is beneficial to the both residents in American House and the students at Stevenson Elementary. Um, a special thank you to all those who've purchased candy canes and to sold, who have sold candy canes. Um, American House has a foundation, called the American House Foundation. It's a nonprofit organization. Um, we partnered up with Wayne State University and it is basically a fund that we help, um, seniors and the locals surrounding metro Detroit area, so it's maybe a utility bill. Um, in December, our community alone, we delivered, um, what was it? A hundred and twenty families we gave a Christmas. And when I say give a Christmas, it wasn't toys, it wasn't, um, things we would normally think of as a Christmas present. We had, um, special, we had a holiday hope program and each, either facility or house or community that we jumped up, um, gifts to, there were all different bags and each bag had items like, one was all, um, items like cleaning products. Another one was all hats and gloves and scarves for the family. So I mean, that's kind of what the foundation is all about. Um, the candy canes that the fourth graders at the school and everyone sold, they donated a hundred and eighty dollars, um, cash that was given to the, um, organization. So that helped with all that, so thank you. Um, I would like to, I would also like to thank all of you for inviting me here tonight and for giving us the opportunity to have such a great experience with your students. And a special thank you to Mrs. Scarborough, of course, and all the parents because there has been times where it's been like, "We want you here tomorrow and they're coming the next day, full costumes and Mickey ears and trick or treat bags and..." I always give carrot sticks, I never give cookies. I never take them to our community store. Um, so again, I know it takes a lot of patience with working with seniors and when you get children and senior citizens that are working together, you need a lot of patience, but they handle it well. They, um, actually have already asked me when you guys are returning. Um, I know tomorrow we had to, it's got to be quite okay. Your phone, but I, they know it's gonna happen. On behalf, yeah, and there was something else I wrote down actually when, when one of the students were talking, um, if anything, our residents are enjoying the entertaining. It was not you, all any of you. You never know what you'll see at American House. So whatever happens with Aunt Jenna, stays with Aunt Jenna. So thank you. Um, on behalf of American House, we truly appreciate it and all of you. So, that's all.
And I would like for you to just enjoy the pictures that we've, um, taken during our experiences. I've never used one of these little things before, so I can come technical assistance here or...
I'm gonna say it's lying in the house.
I'm not gonna read to you, go ahead and read yourself. Am I supposed to push this button? The right here or the left?
Two L, please.
Okay, I got it. Yay. That's when we went to American House. Mickey Mouse was celebrating his eighty-fifth birthday and Disney on Ice invited us to celebrate that with the seniors who were also celebrating their eighty-fifth birthday. And it was a great experience for the kids because they had to sign papers and all of the...
You could actually go online still and you could watch the video and see the clip into the newspaper, so on there.
Okay. They kind of attacked Mickey.
I'll never forget that.
We gave the seniors an experience where they could relive what it was like to have people knock on their doors and say trick or treat. And they set up the community area with tables where the seniors had candies to pass out to the students. And we walked around and said trick or treat and we received candy over and over. Finally, I said to them, if they're gonna go one more time, then they had to give something. And what I asked the students to do was stick up a compliment that they could give a senior as they were receiving their candy. And it was just amazing to see the responses of the seniors as they received. Some of them complimented, one of the ladies said, "Oh, this, oh, what, I just threw this thing on."
She hasn't taken it off.
And more people complimented me about it. And so it was just wonderful, uh, the responses. And it was great for the kids as well. A special thanks to my parents who always show up and walk with me. Um, we have a couple lady parents here this evening. We even had a senior dress up as a senior. They were just off the chain when they got there. So I made everybody take a nap. We were asked to be a part of the Veterans Day Celebration as well and that was just fantastic. The children donated one hundred and fifty Christmas cards that we signed and attached the candy cane to each one. And we sold candy canes, but most of the one hundred and eighty dollars, I have to say, came from classroom donations. We had a student bring in a bank and they just deposited their loose change in the bank and before we knew it, we were at that level. I didn't think they could memorize eight holiday crap, parables, but they did. And they did so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I normally don't cry until graduation day. If anybody goes to graduation, you know I cry all day, but this right here really, really touched me.
Thank you.
What'd you say?
Do we have parents?
Oh, the parents, the parents, yeah?
They will say no.
And thank you. We also like to update the board this evening on our work with the year program. About two years ago, we came to you when we received a grant from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor for all seventh graders in the district. This grant will follow all of these young people until their first year of college. They work with the school to do, um, efficacy...
I was just gonna say, I normally don't cry until graduation day. If anybody goes to graduation, you know I cry all day, but this right here really, really touched me. I would say that was.
Thank you.
What did they say? Do we have parents?
Oh, the parents, the parents, yeah.
I know you must be very proud.
And thank you. We also like to update the board this evening on our work with the GEAR Up program. About two years ago, we came to you when we received a grant from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor for all seventh graders in the district. This grant will follow all of these young people until their first year of college. They work with the schools to do efficacy building programs, study skills, and provide that extra support to make sure that every one of these young people get to college. Well, now, in 2014, those seventh graders are now ninth graders. There are 960 ninth graders, they are all in the GEAR Up program. And as a requirement of that grant, the high school principals and myself must attend training. We will be attending that training in February with the registration paid by the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. But I wanted to share this year about how much of change has gone on in the schools. I'm gonna ask Mr. Bulger, if he would come up to the podium, and each school is doing
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Cook Robinson and the rest of our administrators, parents, faculty, and others. I brought reinforcement. GEAR Up is an acronym, and I'm going to step back and allow Mr. Timothy Constance, one of our eighth, ninth grade teachers, to speak as well as Mrs. Starks, our assistant principal, to speak in greater detail about the GEAR Up program. But the relationship that has been developed with this program has allowed our students to have an experience that goes far beyond the walls of the classroom and the school building. And we're honored to be a part of that. I can go on and on and on, so that's why I'm gonna step back and let them step up and tell us a little bit more about GEAR Up. Mr. Constance.
Thank you, Mr. Bulger. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm very excited to talk for a few minutes about the GEAR Up program. The GEAR Up program is to the University of Michigan and it stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. And our experience over the fall with the GEAR Up program was for, specifically for the ninth graders and we were able to also bring in our eighth grade Aspire Leadership Academy students in on the experience as well. And we participated in a six-week series of workshops on healthy study habits. And I just wanted to go over what the goal of that series of workshops was and what are some of the things that the students learned in that process. So, the goal was to provide students with strategies to address distractions and challenges that they might face to receiving a high-quality education. And in the sessions, this is what they recovered. The first session started with social strategies, talking about communication, how to build communication and improve under communication skills. Then the second session talked about physical strategies, things that might distract them physically from getting an education, such as obtaining a proper sleep routine, exercise, proper diet, how to be able to manage stress. Then emotional strategies were discussed with the students, talking about how they feel about themselves is important because it affects not only how they feel, but how they feel about others and how to be able to connect to those feelings. Then there was another session talking about cognitive strategies and specifically about the power of positive thinking and the ability to avoid what the GEAR Up program calls catastrophic and avoiding comparing yourself to others. And then they finished up with the strategy sessions, talking about motivational strategies, specific things such as time management, establishing a personal reward system, the power of taking breaks, and visualizing success, which was something very, very important that was stressed in these sessions. And then we finished up those sessions with a fun review game that the students were able to get into groups and challenge each other with regards to knowledge that they had obtained in those series of workshops. The life skills and lessons that was taught through this series was the choices that you make now will lead to the consequences that you have to live with later, that your decisions will determine your outcome. How to be able to ask for help, which was something very important. A lot of students don't know how to ask for help and that was discussed. How to use distractions in a positive way and how to feel, how you feel will affect others and your performance. And it was so successful that the GEAR Up program has started talking with the S-RAC staff with regards to what programs can we bring into Southfield Public Schools and into S-RAC for the future. And so, we've been working with the GEAR Up program, talking about what's the next step, what's the follow-up. And one of those follow-ups is that the ninth graders are going to soon be offered an opportunity to apply for the GEAR Up summer program where they're gonna get a chance to live on campus for the summer at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor and feel what it's like to be a student. They're gonna be taking some more intense workshops. Mrs. Starks is gonna tell us a little bit about our field trip that we actually took to U of M Ann Arbor.
Good evening. There aren't too many more things that I can say behind Mr. Constance, other than the Southfield Regional Academic Campus family is very blessed to have, join us, Mr. Timothy Constance and Mrs. Sonia Johnson. In November, Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Constance, and I went up to U of M Ann Arbor where we met with the GEAR Up staff to brainstorm future opportunities for collaboration. We've also provided them with some ideas for future GEAR Up workshops to be held at Southfield Regional Academic Campus. The U of M students joined with our students and they met in small groups to discuss activities about college life, college preparation, and successful study habits. They were also given an opportunity to tour the campus and they enjoyed a very delicious lunch in the Union Center.
You know, if I had gone, I would've, there may not have been any food. The beauty of this is that with the support of Dr. Cook Robinson, Dr. Lyndon Wood, our central office administrator staff, they've trained and they determined, they make things happen for this district that doesn't happen in other places. And we're eternally grateful. These young people who came to us, some of them in shock, you know, because it is a high school setting, some of them a little bit worried, concerned, parents the same, got a chance to get this opportunity together. And now Alejandro, one of the students from U of M, comes down on a regular basis. He's always in the building. And we've been invited by the end of the month to U of M for a symposium for, in recognition for Dr. King. Powerful pieces going on and we just keep adding to it. So, with that, Dr. Cook Robinson, we thank you for calling us up forward to speak for all the high school administrators. We appreciate the program and the support. Thank you.
Next, we have a communication update from Miss Jackula.
Good evening. We just wanted to share with you briefly what's going on in communication. We are launching our January enrollment campaign. It is a multi-layered, integrated campaign, meaning we have several pieces running concurrently. And this year, we utilized our students wherever we could. Southfield Public Schools, as we know, is full of talented young people and so we tried to utilize them in this campaign. We used several mediums, as you can see, so that we would have an integrated campaign. And we have a print ad running in Southfield Sun for two weeks. Our theme this year is focusing on the fact that we have 16 different schools, specialty schools, or specialty focus schools to meet the needs of your students. We hear reports that people don't know we have all these schools, so every opportunity we're letting people know that your child can launch their career dreams at Southfield Public Schools, bright futures, and doors of opportunity open for our students at Southfield Public Schools. So, this will start running in about a week, it'll run for two weeks, it lists all of the schools and what their focus is. Starting next week, I'm sorry, starting tomorrow, we're running a 50-second spot on Praise, 102.7, and a 30-second spot on The Mix, which is going to start, I believe, Thursday. So, we're gonna play both spots, starting with the 60-second. They're very similar. Oh, we use for the, for the student voice Kayla Eccles, an eighth grader from Grace Pull it from the desktop. Now, we tested this all out, as you know. Now, ready for part five?
My years in Janine, I.
Hey, Michelle, what's Dana doing?
Oh, she's thinking all the career choices she can be exposed to when we enroll her in Southfield Public Schools.
Where did she get that idea?
Wow, Southfield Public Schools has 16 schools to choose from, each with a specific focus.
Really?
Yes, they have engineering, medical, and finance academies for high school. Down programs for middle school and foreign language, technology, and science-focused schools for elementary.
Wow, that's impressive.
I know. Did you know that Southfield students won more than $13 million in college scholarships last year and their examination head school, named by Newsweek, is one of the best schools in America? It's also the top performing school in Oakland County, according to the state of Michigan.
So, I bet you made a good choice.
Well, Dana thinks so.
A filmmaker, botanist, engineer, engineer.
See now, the future is right in front of your child at Southfield Public Schools.
That's it. We'll skip the second one, it's the same, it's 30, it's 30 seconds. And The Mix told me the reach is 107,000, which is a lot. Praise reaches 300,000, which is the potential reach. So, we have some decent coverage. The more we're on the radio, the better. So, let's go to the next slide. So, television ads we produce with the help of M1 and these will run on our cable station, but we're also talking to Comcast about doing a community billboard, running some commercial spots with them as well. And this ad was filmed at Southfield Laker and Southfield High, but it features all high school students. So, we gathered students from each high school so that there was representation of everyone. This is a short spot, we're working on a promotional video which will feature all the schools and will be quite a bit longer.
What district has 16 schools offering career-focused academies, award-winning curriculum, and extensive extracurricular activities?
Southfield Public Schools.
What district has national awards for teaching based on the individual needs of its students?
Southfield Public Schools.
What district has the top-performing high school in Oakland County, according to the state of Michigan, and was named on Newsweek's list of best schools in America?
Southfield Public Schools.
Where can you find students who earned more than $13 million in college scholarships last year?
Southfield Public Schools.
Who offers more than 75 electives, after-school activities, and clubs to meet the interests of every student?
Southfield Public Schools.
Where do students learn to soar and get prepared for bright, successful futures?
That was a lot of fun, we had a lot of talented students. And of course, you can follow us on Facebook, like us on Twitter, and visit the website. We'll be doing our campaign on that as well. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to share with the board that I will be going to San Francisco on the first of February to finish the work on the National Commission. And that was on internet safety and learning, I showed the video here last week, and so we will finish that report and it will be available for distribution. Also, on Monday, the cabinet and I went up to Oakland County to go through the active shooter training. We wanted to preview it to see if this is the training we wanted to bring to the district for our administrators and our staff. We also completed an independent course and received certificates from FEMA. And then we went to the classroom training and it was outstanding. And it really speaks to what to do when a shooter comes into your public place. And addition, we gained a lot of knowledge about working more closely with the police, the fire department, and so on, so that in emergencies, we can easily get things under control. So, we will be looking at bringing that training first to the administrators and then to the rest of the staff. At this time, I'm gonna turn the report over to my cabinet.
My report is contained in consent agenda. Thank you.
Good evening. My report is also contained in consent agenda, here's one modification, I didn't know, nine of your personnel report, I asked them to pull that off, we'll consider it as a closed session, and we, we have asked for that consideration, so we will vote on all actions.
One or two?
One, item nine only. And also, I wanted to say personally, thank you too for all that you've done and allowing me to serve you. This will be my final warning with the Board of Education at Southfield Public Schools as I will be leaving the position. We're gonna leave in good hands, once approved this evening with Ms. Newberry and Mr. Willie. And again, it's been a pleasure to serve and thank you.
Can we thank you and the mission, parents?
Yes, we will, and it's been a pleasure having you as a partner. And I guess we'll move it on today. And I am the one with three reports and they will be brief this evening. But we would like to provide an update for the community and the board on our textbook adoption process. And as well, we have a couple of events, and I'm not saying these in the correct order, but we do have our specialized school night that will be forthcoming, and also, we have Saturday School. So, I'd like for Mr. Chaff to come to the podium and give a brief update of all these three events and experiences for us in the district.
Good evening to the members of the Board of Education, cabinet to the community. As Dr. Wood said, we'll make this a very brief presentation. Last month, the Division of Instruction gave a presentation to you about the district-wide plan for textbook review and recommendation. And I wanted to give you a very brief update as to where we are in that process. It already said in December that we would be teacher-like committees or being supported by the Division, complete RFPs, which have taken place. And since that time, our, what has happened is we have received all sample textbooks from publishers that met the criteria for the IRFP. Our textbook review committee members have convened, we have actually convened now three times. In the first round of textbook material evaluation, Phase One was completed. Where we're going from here, beginning this Thursday, next Saturday, and then also Wednesday, January 22nd, we will complete Phase Two and ultimately, Phase Three, which will be a final committee review and evaluation, as well as providing initial recommendations for the Division of Instruction and the superintendent's office as to the committee findings. And so, that's really where we will be focusing our work in the next week and a half. Now, as Dr. Wood said, we wanna make sure that community educators, members of the Board of Education, community stakeholders have an opportunity also to be able to review the textbooks that we have received as a part of our IRP, a request or proposal. So, we'll be offering an open house, if you will, for members of the community. That open house will take place on Tuesday, January 28th, 2014. It'll be located at Eisenhower Elementary School in 24500 Larkens, Southfield 48033. And the times will be And the times we'll be open will be from 9:00 AM through 7:00 PM. We really want to accommodate, uh, those in the community, particularly those families, uh, where, uh, maybe parents are working a little bit later, uh, but also individuals that can come earlier in the day as well. And during this open house, uh, members of the community, as, and what I mean, community, Southfield, Laker Village, our school system, will have an opportunity to look at and review the texts that we've received and also to be able to glean a better understanding as to the process that our district committee reviewers have undergone, which I think has been very detailed, uh, has been very good. So again, that will take place on Tuesday, January 28th, 2014. Next is our Saturday School Winter 2014 Registration Update. Again, flyers will be submitted, uh, will be sent out to high school students as well as all K-8 school buildings, uh, this week. We already have Saturday School information and registration information on the district's website. Our registration for winter term, both for high school as well as K-8, uh, academic enrichment and enrichment, as well as K-8 called academic support, will be Monday, January 27th, and Wednesday, January 29th. Uh, the location will be at Michigan First Credit Union. And on both days of registration, the times of registration will be from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM. And again, as we have in the past, high school will offer credit recovery courses, academic tutorial support. Elementary and middle school students will be off, have offerings with enrichment classes, uh, world languages, uh, arts, uh, drama dance, and so on and so forth, as well as our well-received academic support and skill strengthening labs. Again, those will be offered. For more information about Saturday School registration, uh, you can reach us at email, at SBS Programs, southfield.k12.mi.us, or it's SBS Programs outline at 248-746-4326. You can also find the information on the district website at southfield.k12.mi.us under the District News heading. And finally, we'll be offering, once again, our Specialized Schools Night. This event will showcase the many offerings of our, again, our 16 unique and different schools, uh, presenting on topics from our ID programming, uh, to application school, STEM programming, dual enrollment, AP prep, and a lot more. That will also be taking place on Monday, February 3rd, 2014, uh, at Michigan First Credit Union from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM. Again, that will be Monday, February 3rd, 2014, at Michigan First Credit Union from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. And that includes my presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
That, that completes our report. Thank you very much. Uh, and now we have action. Oh, wait a minute. After the superintendent's report, we have Ms. Trump.
Okay, it starts, uh, Yolanda. Vice President. Anne Frank, as her proxy. Um, we are looking at the Bussie Center for Early Childhood Education Policy Council note for actually the month of January. Uh, because this is a public and federal-style program, it's important that we keep you all informed of financial information. And you may recall, in the month of December, we didn't bring you a report for policy council. So that information will be provided to Ms. Christians, and she will include that in this month's minutes. However, for January, we do have the data, and we have the data for both. But today, the report will show enrollment update. January, 228 students are enrolled, 81 students are on the waiting list, and 31 students are, have dropped. Drops have occurred in some of the Great Start Readiness Program classrooms. Parents needing latchkey services. Ms. Hill did do her due diligence to find out about the availability of before and after care. But there's a lot of hoops and things to do, so she's working on that. Additionally, half-day classrooms, those students who are in those half-day classrooms, a lot of them, a lot of their parents are really needing a full-day classroom situation. So that's something for us to mull over. In regards to services, 17 children are receiving disability services. In order to meet the 10%, uh, we, we would like to shoot for 19 or better. And the compliance date for that is January 15th, 2014. Four referrals have been submitted this period. With regard to our CACFP, meals served, 1,899 breakfast, 2,228 lunch, 1,691 snacks. Uh, probably a low for Ms. Hill's morale was our ADA for the month, which, if you've paid attention to our, our, our minutes here, we, we strive for 85%. That's the goal for Head Start. And 47.25, we all recognize, is a far cry from 85. But as with anything transportation, illness and cold weather seems to have been a big deal as far as why students aren't there. Ms. Hill, she's got an action plan. She's just gonna send it up the flagpole, see what the response is, and, and then make some, some necessary changes. Um, one thing that was really emphasized that even I wasn't aware, that if you were to contact your child's school at Bussie whenever your student is planning to be absent, we can still count that as credits. Um, staff can take activities and what have you to the child's home. That's a plus for Head Start. They're not gonna do that at your hynny town. Um, however, they'll come, they'll do that, and we can actually get credit for that attendance. But it's only if you call and let us know. With regard to governance training, everybody was pretty much snowed in on the sixth and the seventh, so we know it was canceled. The new date was set for training for Monday, February 24th, and Tuesday, the 25th. A quorum need not be present, and that's from 9:00 to 3:00 at JWE. And obviously, that's for board members. Bussie, as you heard earlier, was awarded the NACE accreditation for another five years. And just like at your local talk shows where they flash applause, this will be appropriate too. We would like to welcome Mr. Richardson to the Blue Dog Room, and he is underneath our Great Start Readiness Program grant. Regarding upcoming events, Family Engagement Workshop will be January 15th from, I'm sorry, January 15th. The first is at 8:30 AM, and if you are not able to attend that one, 4:00 PM in the, in the evening. The Michigan AEYC Conference in Dearborn, Michigan is scheduled for January 23rd and 24th. And as a result, there will be no school for the children on the 23rd at Bussie. Staff will attend on the 23rd and 24th. The Parent Focus Group, their meeting is January 21st and January 22nd, 8:30 and 4:00 PM. The Self-Assessment Training, Thursday, January 30th, 9:00 to 12:00. And Forgotten Harvest, Friday, January 17th. The distribution will begin at 10:00 AM. Please remember to bring your orange punch card. And then, I threw a pie chart in here, 'cause visuals are so more exciting than just numbers. And as you can see, program operation is a good chunk of the budget, training and technical assistance, and then the local match, and you also see the, the total Head Start funding of $1.5 million. Additionally, the federal budget allocation, the larger blue salaries, the lighter blue fringe, and so forth and so on, purchased supplies will be the third-largest, um, expense or allocation. And then, I'll pop slightly slower, so those of you at home who are looking at this can really DVR it up and check out various little, little line items. But I did wanna point out that, uh, we are 63, we have about 63.5% of the budget remaining to the tune of about $981,000. In that, if you look closely under the local match or the in-kind, it says under Parents, Volunteers, and Donations, we, uh, Head Start gives credit and dollars for your time, your volunteer hours. Likewise, with the Board of Education, you'll see there, we, we amassed a few dollars as well uh, towards what, um, it takes to make the program successful. And with that, we submit. Thank you.
Thank you for that very thorough report, Ms. Smith. The only thing I could add is NACE, N-A-E-Y-C, stands for the National Association for the Education of Young Children. And, uh, we have received that award for many years running. And program is better than ever and bigger than ever. And I applaud you yourself. So, uh, the next item is the action item. Um, uh, do I ask, uh, do I hear someone to vote the motions? Give a motion to open and approve Report Number 5235.
Madam President, um, before we get there, I move that we, uh, remove Item 8 from the Consent Agenda as we have.
Nine.
I need some clarification on the being, but we have not, we have not, we have not, um, are we going into closed session regarding which item? I, I think we need to see what kind of report you're in. Look at 8, 10, and 9. Okay? No, I'm looking right at it, so, okay. You're saying remove Item 9 from the Consent Agenda?
I, I need to just, somewhere, um, I need to set this screen to make sure that there's a line.
That's, I just wanna make sure we clear. Can I move that we remove, uh, Item 9 from the Consent Agenda?
Do I have a second?
For it.
Any comments?
No comments.
Oh, so vote, but can we do the tie-in?
Okay.
Okay, vote. Ms. Cat?
Yeah?
Um, Mr. Foo?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
My side, yes. No, it's unanimous.
Okay, well, there, there, first we have to vote to remove that from the Consent Agenda. Now we have to vote on the Consent Agenda.
Yeah.
So now we go on the Consent Agenda.
Let's do it open, then we second it, and we close.
No, we voted on, on, on my motion to remove that item. I move that we, uh, approve the Consent Agenda.
Move that.
Remove the second.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Foo?
Yes.
My side, yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Um, unanimous. Hmm? Uh, I would like to have a motion to open Report Number 5236.
I move that we open Report 5236 and Video Surveillance.
Pardon me. Uh, any discussion? Nope, we can't vote, so.
Before we move forward, um, I would just like to, again, thank the board. Not miss the microphone, uh, this was. Uh, in terms of what just occurred, you did accept my resignation in this action. You also approved Ms. Newberry into the interim role for Associate Superintendent for Labor and Human Resources. So I would make note of that. She'll be in this chair next four weeks.
Yeah, but you have to stay there for now.
Technically?
Madam President, it would be possible to have Ms. Newberry come to the podium so that she can officially meet the board.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Joan Newberry. I've been with the district since, uh, coming up on my fourth, the end of my fourth year. Um, and it is an honor and a pleasure to, um, to serve the Southfield Public Schools District. And, um, I look forward to working with you all.
Can we call for a vote? Okay, Mr. Foo?
When did we, when?
When did we open this thing?
Did?
We did. You want to open it again?
Can we, no, can we have a discussion on the video surveillance?
You want a discussion?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, um, back in November, uh, our IT Director, Ryan Belzey, brought a, um, an evaluation of where we needed to go out into the next four years for our technology plan. And at that time, we talked about what it would take as far as infrastructure upgrades and things like that to get us to a 21st-century learner, so we can have a goal of one-to-one or bring your own device in mind. So, and they've been, uh, busy, busy at work since that time. So the next four reports are the results there.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Uh, so, uh, would you like me to cover all four, uh, board reports in one? Or should we go through the voting? Okay, got it. All right, so what we're gonna be discussing, the first action item is, uh, Report Number 36, the Video Surveillance System. Uh, with this proposal, I wanna talk about, uh, what it's going to accomplish and then the impact it's gonna have on Southfield Public Schools real briefly. So, the Video Surveillance System, Southfield has numerous different deployments of video surveillance throughout the system. The goal of this project is to bring all of the video surveillance systems into one management platform, so that way we can have the insight into the buildings, into the district's, uh, resources to, um, you know, use the video surveillance to benefit, um, you know, security. Is the number one reason why we use, uh, video surveillance in schools today. So, uh, this award was awarded to a, um, Milestone Platform. The Milestone Platform, we did an extensive review. I was part of the, personally, part of an extensive review process with the Oakland Schools uh, last year in taking this Milestone Platform. Uh, some of the advantages of Milestone Platform is it's a truly mobile platform. Uh, so on Android devices, on your iPad, on your iPhones, you can pull up the video surveillance. You'll be able to pull up the video cameras, all the video cameras that Southfield Public Schools has on mobile devices. So if a, uh, assistant principal is in the cafeteria during lunch duty, and let's say there's an incident on the, you know, back corner of the building, they can pull it up and zero in. Uh, this will also enable, uh, remote access from the Southfield PE. So if we do have incidents that we're not looking forward to, and we have to call the police in, they'll be able to dial in through the system and view, uh, the video surveillance. Uh, so, uh, this was part of an Oakland Schools IRFP. This will take every single, um, IP, every single camera in the district, put it under one management platform called the Milestone Platform.
If I could just add, Lynn, this is extremely important as we continue to design our safety environment for our staff and our students. We want the Southfield Police Department at any time to be able to queue into any of the 14 buildings, including this one, and see exactly what is happening on the inside and the outside.
So when we get it all complete, we'll, uh, give the board an update and show the, uh, Milestone software on what our capabilities are at a future meeting. Go ahead. Uh, this is all security-based, uh, so, uh, the security on the network, you have to have credentials to get into it. Uh, you have to launch a VPN on your mobile device to get into it. So, uh, it is held down by, uh, tight national standards for security.
Madam President, if I could just add one more thing. This is part of the technology plan that we discussed, uh, several weeks ago in our study session, as you can see, in Phase One. This is part of our plan. And all the things that you'll hear about this evening are within our five-year plan.
Our five-year strategic?
Our five-year strategic plan. And the technology plan, as you know, is a component of that. But this also has to be filed with the, the state. Do you want a discussion? Let's call for a vote. Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Uh, Frank, yes. Um, Flannell Foo?
Yes.
My side, yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? All right, add it. Me too. Uh, let's call for, uh, Report Number 5237.
I move that we open Report 5237.
Uh, there are some, approximately a hundred and thirty-seven classrooms in Southfield Public Schools that do not have a data projector, uh, so this goal of this project was to provide that base level of technology to every classroom, and we did that by an audit to, in each building, each classroom, to verify that, um, you know, our numbers are correct. Uh, so we did with this one, uh, I'm very happy that we, uh, went out for bid with this with the Southfield Public Schools issued bid. Uh, we beat our, our, our target, our budget by a couple hundred dollars per classroom by going through and issuing a Southfield Public Schools bid. We beat the cooperative bid, we beat the RMCU bid by a couple hundred dollars. So, we did, uh, right before the holiday break, we did, uh, have an RFP opening, and we did receive a lot of, uh, bids, which is an addendum, uh, to this, uh, report, uh, that outlines, uh, all the bids that we received. And what we want to do with this, uh, award, is award it to three different, um, you know, bidders that, uh, bidded on this project, and I'll just go through quickly why our rationale and how we got to the three different, um, you know, recommendations for the three different awards. So, the first award is to our Data Image Systems, uh, for the Epson Powerlight, uh, projector. So, we have a standard in, at Southfield Public Schools to, to purchase, uh, Epson projectors, so we're able to continue with that standard, and a little bid for the actual projector equipment was to, uh, Data Image, uh, they are a local Michigan vendor who has been providing Epson projectors to numerous school districts for many years, so, uh, we have, uh, they've all recommended. Uh, the second award goes to, um, we looked at the installation and the electrical, because with each projector, you have to have the installation, the mounting hardware, the cabling, but you also have to have electrician wiring, uh, what you can power the projector. So, um, some of the bidders, they just bid the installation, some of the bidders, they just bid the electrical. But because we wanted to have a turnkey installation in terms of managing the install, uh, when we looked at it from the electrical point of view and from the projector point of view, uh, Digital Age Technologies, uh, was a little bidder for that. And they were a little bidder for the types of classrooms that have drop ceilings, so the majority of the classrooms have drop ceilings. So, the majority of the installation electrical, we're recommending going to Digital Age Technologies. The third, uh, requirement, we do have a couple classrooms in the Southfield Public Schools that have hard ceilings. Now, Digital Age did, um, supply a bid for that, but, uh, Seihai came up with a, um, alternative bid scenario that they put in their response, which was, um, which was creative. Uh, it involved mounting a, um, apparatus on a wall, a brick wall, and bringing the projector out, because in these hard ceilings in, in the Southfield Public Schools, we have a lot of asbestos, so this alternative, uh, bid scenario that they bid, uh, in their response, uh, alleviated the need to do asbestos abatement. So, uh, with keeping this project and wanting to get this technology into the classrooms and not having to do asbestos abatement, we recommend awarding to Seihai Computer Products for the alternative bid for a fixed mount, a wall-mounted projector. And this will provide great resources to the teachers, be able to use data, uh, data projector in their classroom, brings, you know, the whole internet to all the students at a given time, where the teacher is working on a couple of lessons, where the student, so, uh, it is a necessity to have a data projector in the classroom today. Any questions about that?
So, if I understand this correctly, we have a total of a hundred and thirty-seven projectors that we're purchasing from two different vendors, because of the, uh, a hundred and seven from one, thirty from another, because of the difference in the installation.
Yes, correct, and, uh, the, uh, the projectors that will be installed by Digital Age Technologies will be purchased from Data Image, that's the majority of the projectors. The Seihai bid includes the Epson projector with the installation and electrical install.
And Seihai is buying them from Digital Age?
Uh, Seihai is buying them, you know, from Epson directly.
Okay.
And supplying them to us.
Alright, alright.
They're a little bit different type of projector.
Yes. Difference?
Uh, in terms of the way that they're mounted on the wall.
I understood that part, but, I mean, the actual projector itself is the same projector?
Uh, it's a different model, the, uh, the Epson model that we're going with, and the drop ceiling is a ninety-seven, and the, uh, projector we're going with, with the wall-mounted projector is a four forty-five.
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five.
It's a short throw projector.
Short throw projector. The, the lens and stuff is a little bit differently when you bring it on an arm from the wall versus mounting it like this one is mounted up here.
Okay. And, and they're still able to interact with the whiteboard, you know?
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, it produces the same image, it's just a matter of whether it's put itself from the drop ceiling or whether it's on an arm coming out mounted to the brick wall, which provides, you know, the, it provides, um, we don't have to modify the arm ceiling where the asbestos is located.
Right.
And, uh, this proposal, uh, is, is relates to the next report with, uh, which is, um, the Apple iPads, and I'll get into that when we get to that report, but, you know, this is, this is a data projection component, there's kind of a package, uh, coming with these reports on, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
Can I tell the parents at home exactly what a data projector is and how the kids are going to understand what we're talking about?
In our classrooms, first of all, we want all the classrooms to have a basic level of technology, so no matter what school you're in or what classroom. The data projectors enable the teachers to project on the screen, they can go on YouTube, and bring live streaming examples into the classroom. In our younger, um, classrooms like Lucy, we can actually take software games that help them to count, to add, and make them walk right up to the smart board like it's a touchscreen. But the real, I think the real fancy, kind of attractive stuff is at high school, because you can go on the internet and bring any information that's there right into the classroom through, on the, uh, smart board, or right to their phone, so they can even use their own devices. And one of the next, uh, reports will talk about how they'll be able to bring their own devices into the room. So, it really opens up the amount of content that can be taught. Does that help them?
It, it helps. It really helps create a collaborative, uh, you know, workspace in the classroom where they can share, the teacher or the student can share their work, or a, a student, uh, students working together in a group, their work, um, to the other students in the classroom.
We can also, you know, international partners, if that's what you're correct.
Oh, absolutely.
Live video.
Video streaming.
Yes, we can, uh, Skype being, I, uh, iMessage, iChat.
That opens up the possibilities for distance learning as well and conferencing and collaboration.
Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, let's call for a vote. Uh, Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
All right, add it. You know? Thank you very much. Uh, do I hear someone to, uh, open the report number fifty-two thirty-nine, the one-land network, oh, the fifty-two thirty-eight, sorry. The Apple iPad, here. Move, we open the report fifty-two thirty-eight.
Uh, this report focuses on providing, each one of those classes that we just talked about, providing the data projector to, an Apple iPad, uh, as a package to, um, to each classroom. Uh, this is essential today because a lot of the resources, there are, you know, over forty thousand educational apps available on the Apple Store for education, so providing an, an Apple iPad to each teacher in their classroom really opens up opportunities to those educational apps. Uh, what it also does is, we're going to be installing an Apple TV, and let me describe what an Apple TV is. An Apple TV connects to the data projector, it's a little tiny box, it's a ninety-nine dollar, uh, box, and, uh, it allows you to display from your iPad, from your iPhone, to the data projector. So, if students, um, you know, are working on an application, they can display it, they, if they're writing a, you know, collaborative work, they can display that. What it also does is provide, um, an interactive piece, um, to the data projector. So, from, if, let's say, students in a small group are working on, you know, an exercise or a drawing, they can work on their iPad in a small group, then they can display that using the Apple TV up through the data projector. So, it, it brings, you know, learning down to the hands of the device, but then it enables sharing up to the entire class. So, uh, that's a great, great benefit and a great impact as part of this package that we're bringing forward.
And through that, do you still get the touchscreen capability through the, um, through the Apple TV?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, you know, it, when you're using apps like, um, ShowMe, which is a common app used inside of the classroom for, let's say, an algebra, um, you know, demonstration, if you're teaching algebra and you're showing the students, uh, an equation, uh, you can draw, the teacher can draw it on their iPad, they can capture it, I mean, record it, and then they can replay it. So, let's say that they watch this scenario one time, the equation one time, they can hit, you know, record, replay, replay that, um, you know, that exercise. Or if it's live, if students are, you know, coming up to, let's say, the front of the class, and they're each demonstrating their work, they, there can be the interactive piece of whatever's being drawn with their finger on the iPad is displayed to the larger class. So, it's really the interactive piece that we see with interactive whiteboards, which were very popular, you know, been around in educational classrooms for five or six years. This iPad, uh, that we're recommending to purchase with each data projector, provides an interactive piece, but it also provides, uh, the access to the forty thousand educational apps that are very, very beneficial to our students, whether it be a small intervention, however those, the teachers feel that those apps will be beneficial to the student.
3D.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
3D.
The map, the 3D, 3D.
Uh, yeah, so there is a lot of, uh, apps, uh, there's one, uh, that deals with the universe out there. If you hold the iPad up to the sky, point it at the stars, it will show you interactively what you're looking at, so like stargazing, that's a great example, so, yeah.
Do you want to hear where you are in the presence?
And, uh, through this, uh, through these initiatives that we're talking about, the base level of technology, uh, in the, uh, in, in our agreement to provide, uh, technology services to Southfield Public Schools, we have, uh, Technology Integration Services, so Carrie Julia Ile, who is our, uh, Educational EdTech Specialist, we'll be working with her to, uh, uh, come up with a package for each classroom to ensure that, uh, each classroom receives a base level of instruction on how to use these new tools, uh, that will be, uh, implementing into their classrooms.
Thank you. Is there any more questions? That's all. No questions?
Just a general question about the iPad Airs. Will they, um, will we be providing covers for them in terms of breaking and falling? Um, you know, what are some of the general protections that we have for this kind of a device?
Uh, they, uh, believe it or not, the iPads are very durable, uh, in nature in themselves, uh, in working, you know, the last couple of years in education, specifically with the iPads in numerous districts, uh, you know, you have a very small, um, breakage rate among your iPads. Uh, because these iPads are going into classrooms, uh, it'll be up to the building administrators to purchase cases. It, you can go back and forth on it, it's a very personalized decision in terms of if that, um, iPad is issued to a teacher, if I were to buy them a green case, they might like a black case. Uh, you know, cases are very, very inexpensive, you can pick up a case that does that protection for two or three dollars. Uh, so, you know, if a need arises in a building where, um, they would like to provide cases, we, we do have those funds available to provide it. But, uh, instead of purchasing, you know, a hundred and thirty-seven cases, um, and a lot of times they come off, I've seen it happen in school districts, our recommendation really is the building level to, you know, maybe pick one or two cases that, uh, the staff would like and, and build from there.
And in relation to security, the iPad, no, a teacher would be responsible for it? A question at the end of class, or how will we, uh, protect those?
Uh, this iPad, um, is, think of it as a, uh, one per, per classroom, so each classroom will be assigned one iPad, and that iPad will be issued to the teacher, and it will be like, you know, a teacher's volume of a textbook that we, you know, sign out to them.
But they'll be responsible, I understand your question, yes, they will be responsible for it. Even here in the district, uh, the laptops that we use, if we break them or lose them, we have to replace them. We, we sign that. That's fun.
Call for a vote? Okay. Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Uh, this, uh, Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, add it. Thank you. Well, uh, now, do I have someone to open the report number fifty-two thirty-nine, the one-land network upgrade?
I move that we approve the report fifty-two thirty-nine, the WAN-LAN network upgrade.
Thank you. Well, uh, now, do I have someone to open the report number fifty-two thirty-nine, the one-land network upgrade?
I move that we approve the report fifty-two thirty-nine, the WAN-LAN network upgrade.
Thank you.
This, uh, report is probably the most significant in terms of the impact to the Southfield Public Schools. Uh, this report, uh, in this action item, is to upgrade, uh, essentially the district's network electronics. Um, what WAN-LAN means is a wide area network, so, Southfield Public Schools has a fiber network that interconnects all of the buildings inside of a, if we think about a circle around the perimeter of our school district. Uh, a LAN is a local area network that is inside of the building, so that's a physical network inside of the building. Uh, so this, uh, report in this action item upgrades both the LAN and a section of the LAN inside of the building. So, the current network, uh, in Southfield Public Schools was purchased back in two thousand and six, and, uh, you know, on average lifespan, you would plan to replace the network every eight to ten years, so we're right at that edge. Um, there's really two important, um, you know, technical reasons why we need to impact that, why we need to upgrade this, uh, network infrastructure. That is because the current speeds of the installed network do not have, um, gigabit speeds. Um, gigabit would be our minimum, if we had gigabit, we wouldn't have to upgrade, but we're actually beyond, the industry is beyond gigabit. Um, they're at ten gigs, so ten gig is kind of the standard today. So, this proposal would upgrade the fiber optic network to a ten gig, um, solution provided by Cisco, and then also upgrade, um, and put gig capabilities in each closet, so in every building, we have multiple closets, and they're called MDS and IDS, they're called master distribution closets, and there's a closet in each, each building, multiple closets. Southfield has approximately ten, so we want to bring that ten gig capability to each closet inside of Southfield Public Schools, and we want to bring ten gig to there. Then we want to be able to provide wireless, uh, the speeds that the wireless system demands if we're going to be moving towards a solution to provide DYOV, bring your own device, or a one-in-one initiative, which is kind of slated to be talked about next year. So, this, uh, this upgrade is required because we need to have those, those speeds available when we have thousands of devices, probably tens of thousands of devices, each student, they carry three or four devices, bring it to school with them, and we need to ensure that we have the capabilities. Um, so, we, uh, over the last three months, uh, have spent numerous hours researching different solutions, um, and we really focused then on two different providers that could provide solutions that we have installed within Oakland County, and that involves a Cisco solution and also Extreme solution. There are numerous engineers at Oakland Schools that are certified in Extreme gear, uh, but Southfield Public Schools has a, um, heavy investment in the Cisco phone system, also the current network is Cisco. Um, so, we, throughout, throughout using co-op, the purchase agreement, or available through state bid list, we took a look at both Extreme gear and Cisco, uh, very, you know, line-by-line comparison items to look at what each solution would cost. And I'm happy to present to you that the Cisco solution actually came in at a lower cost. And the big differentiator, uh, Cisco is the market leader. Uh, Extreme falls in about number four, number five, if you look at it on a, you know, spectrum of where they fit in. There are numerous engineers at Oakland Schools that are certified in Extreme gear. But, Southfield Public Schools has a heavy investment in the Cisco phone system, also the current network is Cisco. So, we, throughout using, with purchase agreement that are available through state bid list, we took a look at both Extreme gear and Cisco, very, you know, line-by-line comparison item to look at what each solution would cost. And I'm happy to present to you that the Cisco solution actually came in at a lower cost. And the big differentiator, as Cisco is the market leader, Extreme falls in about number four, number five, if you look at it on a, you know, spectrum of where they fit in the market share. The big differentiator between Cisco and Extreme is that Cisco has provided each one of these pieces of equipment that we were purchasing with a limited lifetime warranty. And what that means is, because we want to look at this next upgrade over an eight-year period, we want to make sure that in years five and six, when the equipment starts to age, that we have that warranty. So, this provides the warranty for the equipment and in a next-day exchange. So, if we had a piece of equipment that failed, we'd be able to send it back to Cisco and get it replaced at no charge. So, we actually know our cost. We, if you vote on this, we know our cost for the next eight years, which is very important to know, that you don't have to add maintenance and, you know, maintenance costs can increase over time. We know our true cost today.
I just want to say that, years ago, about eight or nine years ago, that we first installed fiber optic.
2000, yes.
So, it was important that, you know, we, it was a hard sell to get the community to understand why we were spending so much money. This is the reason why, because here we are, eight years later, able to speed up the network, you know, on a fiber optic by just adding attenuators. It's just, it's just put, all we have to do each time, we don't have to change the actual cabling that's laid underground. All we have to do is put a faster route on there to speed up the entire network. You didn't think I knew this? So, that's all we're, you know, that's all we're doing, because now we've started to add more appliances onto the network. So, the vision was years ago that, you know, we would be at this point. We're now at that point, so now we're able to, you know, take advantage of...
Those one-time costs of investing in the fiber network will, you know, pay off for another 20 years while we demand that high need for bandwidth in our educational classrooms today.
I'm sorry, I have to explain it to the audience so the fans will understand clearly what I'm saying.
Uh, this proposal, you know, provides upgrading the majority of the LAN and the land. This does not upgrade every switch in the district, and the main reason why we did not bring a proposal to do that is because the Cisco phone system is approximately six and seven years old, and while its phone system still has a number of years left in its useful life, the ports that are provided off of that, of those phones, are only 100 meg. So, we have, you know, all these, all the computers out on the network plugged in in 100 meg. So, to upgrade all the ports that the phone is plugged into, just does not make sense at this time to do a wholesale upgrade. And with the way that the industry is moving, with education providing high-speed wireless access, all the access points will be plugged in at gig speed, and that's really what we need to plan for, is our students bring in those three or four devices to be able to provide that speed to enable the, you know, online education that we need to provide.
Ask for a vote. Okay. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Kent?
Yes.
Ms. Fussier?
Yes.
Ms. Kent?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, information, report number 5240, Bell summary. Report 5241, the purchasing report. This is a report on purchases over $5,000. We don't need to vote on that? Okay? No comments. Public participation, the Board has recently adopted an revision policy on public participation. Only those persons with terms related to school matters may participate during the public participation post-annality meeting. We have no cards, please. We have no cards. I'll stop right there. Board matters. First of all, I would like to say, Mr. David Turner.
I'm ready, darling.
That guy.
I want to wish you the best of luck. You know, you're going to be best. We will single you occasionally. We wish you the best of everything in your new job. Are there any other questions for Mr. ...
I'd just like to say thanks for the board recognition this evening, to the local community, as well as the attendees here in the room. I wish that you two be all safe, wish each of you a safe, happy, prosperous New Year as we all move forward as partners in mentoring, teaching, coaching, and cultivating our student life.
Thank you. Next, would you finish?
Uh, Mr. Turner, I would like to congratulate you, one, on your new assignment, your new job. I mean, that's life-changing, but it's well-earned. I mean, you have demonstrated some unbelievable abilities in labor relations. You did a marvelous job of navigating this board through some very, very tenuous times and did it in a way that we now have what I think a lot of districts would envy, probably the most positive relationship with our teachers and our bargaining unit that rival none other, none other in Oakland County, I'm certain. Because when I meet with other school boards and talk to other trustees, they talk about nothing but the battles that they're going through. We're done with that. We don't have to, we don't have to worry about that, and it's, you know, a more positive relationship, it's a partnership between us, our teachers, and all of our bargaining units, and for that, I thank you. You did a wonderful job, sir.
Thanks for your service.
I'd just like to concur with Mr. Buchanan, kind of, we met in this room for the first time. I knew, sometimes you just know, and I think I extended to you that courtesy, that I knew you knew. You have to be there to understand that. And you brought a wealth of skill, professionalism, and hard work to that position, and this district will be grateful. At a very strategic time in not only this city, but throughout this country, and I consider you a part of that church. So, good luck to you and your family. We will meet again, and if you ever need us, hopefully we'll get some contact. Thank you for your service.
Good luck. Good luck to Turner. And it's good to know that others appreciate your talent. Good luck. Thank you.
Yes. I guess I'll start with the David Turner piece, which is just thank you for your service. That's ego. Probably would have voted no had I, no, I'm kidding. And, you know, we all live in the city of Southfield, we're all residents, pay taxes and care about what happens, and most of you, if not all of you, knew that our city administrator passed, and his services were held today. The internment is tomorrow, family only. But I just think, you know, we, when we talk about partnerships, what are we without our city, and what is our city without our schools? So, it would be in poor taste if we let a meeting close without at least acknowledging Mr. Sharette, if it'd be okay with the board with a moment of silence. And thank you for that, and I'm sure the family would appreciate it. And just within 30 seconds, I'd just like to say that November 15th of last year, I did participate in the Oakland County Youth Assistance Sponsor Appreciation Breakfast. Dr. Will was there, I think I saw him as far, it was just tons of staff there, and I wrote down just something that I thought was important, because sometimes we forget about the impact that the youth assistance really has and how diverse Oakland County is to even have a program like that. It was Judge Eugene Arthur Moore, who basically said that to make a difference, you start when they are young. He pointed out that probation costs 10 times more than the cost for youth assistance, as well as juvenile incarceration actually costs 100 times more than the money and the dollars that we as taxpayers and residents spend to help our youth, who would otherwise be at risk, forgotten, or downtrodden. And so, let us, whenever we get an opportunity to volunteer or donate time, money, services, remember that the Oakland County Youth Assistance operates with the sponsorship of local school districts, municipalities, and the Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division, with principal funding supplied through the Oakland County Board of Education. So, as you can see, it's the village, district, municipalities, and the Circuit Court Family Division are working hard to help keep kids in school, on the right track, because really that's what school's all about. So, I just want to give them a personal shout-out and to just ask the community to keep supporting them.
I would like to say also that this board attended a retreat this past weekend, at which time we took two classes to help us with the work of the board, and they were both very good, with professors from Oakland Schools, Oakland iPad. Scott?
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to say, this is David's last meeting. You know, I think back to several years ago when we hired David. I took this young man to lunch, and as he's eating lunch, and by the way, he ordered two meals. Sorry. And he's eating these two meals, and I'm just watching this young man, and he's saying, "Oh, you won't eat that, I'm gonna handle it." And I said, "What else is there?" I'm trying to describe the situation we have here. "Oh, I'm gonna handle that," and he keeps eating. And I thought, hmm, this young whippersnapper, I don't know. But he has come and joined this team, and he has done everything that he said he was going to do, and he shall be greatly missed. I'd like to invite everyone to come tomorrow, we're gonna say farewell to David, have a few carrot sticks and cry a little bit, but we wish him well. David is going on to Eastern Michigan University, where he will be the Vice President of Human Resources and Labor Relations. And he's a young man, kind of young for that post, but I think he has everything that he needs to step up and handle the best. So, you shall be greatly missed, and we just want you to know we love your worship.
Glad we had a future meeting tomorrow, on January 28th at 6:00, you know, we have Carrie, on February 6th at 6:00, board study session, and on February 11th at 7:00 PM, regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting, report.
The Southfield Public Schools is now adjourned. Thank you.